Luke, can you try talking real quick? I want to make sure we have audio.
Yeah, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Try talking real quick, I want to make sure we have audio.
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yeah, we're live. I just not so sure about, you know, our speakers.
Can you hear me?
Because I was talking through this.
I'm here if you can hear me.
I'm just not sure how much our room's gonna get picked up. Okay, yeah, we can try. Just bear with us.
Enter your attendee ID number, followed by pound. If you do not know your attendee number.
When Mr. Rucci did that, as well as the smaller complex that was done out in front is now sitting empty. Okay, they've got Dunkin' Donuts, but there's not many people occupied and have to pick up the property now. So, my concern is, first of all, the pedestrian traffic that's out going over in the park now is gotta be supervised as is. These people, any of them are not from town. They just had a fireworks display, they kept it going till midnight. I had to be on the property to prevent people from putting through the property after the fireworks display. This is how the vandalism in the area occurs. But the net result is really, it's gotta be thoughtful, it's gotta be careful. But also, there's been nobody killed on that road in quite a few years. Before, they had a sidewalk on the opposite side of 101, where the house, what, people used to walk in the street. And then some people that were killed and never found out who did it, they rented by a car. There's no street lining, okay, there's no, and the state should really, it's a state road, should be putting some money into it. I mean, it's paved, but they're going through their sixty, seventy miles an hour. So, that's it, that's it in the NASTA. So, the bottom line is, we're trying to preserve the architecture, and we certainly don't want a lot of intrusion on the property. And what I'm trying to do is with video and cameras, prevent break-ins and things of that type. But in fact, we just took, we just bought Warren Potter, hold on. We just bought sixteen eighteen Pleasant Street, have to close on it. That belongs to my son-in-law. They didn't buy it because that's access to the back of our property, and they were undesirable for the building. But we don't have the storage now since they burned down the carriage house. I've gotta address that. So, all the profits that I've ever made in Springfield, Massachusetts, where I've got about a hundred apartments, and East Killingley, where I built two houses up there, that are typical of what I like to do. On Pond Road, you'll take a look at, uh, those columns out in front. That house has sold a couple of times. And I own most of the land over there, um, as you go into one of them.
Right now.
Okay?
Thank you.
You want more help, I'll give you help any way I can. But it's got, it answers to my wife, names all over the stuff. And we're gonna be dead tomorrow at some point. I'm trying to put some stuff in the trust so that the character of the neighborhood.
Al, you're not the only application, okay, we got tons.
It's going to remake the city. Okay, I'm gonna wrap it up. You want any further comments? You're welcome to call me.
I know, I would have called.
If you don't want comments, you'll still get them from me. I've never been one to follow the rules.
No.
I'm gonna tell you right now, the Boston.
You told me enough for tonight.
The Boston carriage house.
Right in the morning next time.
Okay. I hope I don't have to come back. If you see any of these posts inside, throw them around and rip them off and cruise. They're gonna fall over there by the graveyard.
Anybody else want to speak to this application?
The green light on, please?
No, no, right on the base of the mic.
Just come. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate our opposition. I didn't hear the ones mention any of the storage issues or any type of designing for that. Also, you're really increasing the blacktop in the area. If you notice how much blacktop is in the whole area. It's not really good for the environment and increasing the warming. And then, as the community grows, we're gonna wanna preserve our open space more. So, putting that easement there, I just don't think it's a good idea. Growing up, going to the park my whole life, I don't think it's a good idea. But other than that, yeah, that's my stance on it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else want to speak to this? It's gonna be continued to next month anyway, so.
We'll need a motion to the.
Okay, we have a motion that can continue this. Second by Michael. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Okay, let's continue. Special permit application. Twenty-three thirteen thirteen seventeen, Canterbury Holdings LLC, Upper Maple Street LLC, landowner. Twenty-five Colonial Drive, YAS MAP, one thirteen lot twenty-nine dot six. Six point five seven acres, low density, application for PRD. IRL, consisting of sixteen two-family residential buildings. Zoning section four ten point two point two, low density, PRD, section five seventy plan residential development, and section seven hundred special permit and section four seventy site plan. Could you introduce yourself and name an address, please?
With me, I have representative of Canterbury Holdings, Randy Brown. Applicant. As a remit owner. On, like, that people require the property. Don't discount it. I'm just gonna give you a little background. Jonathan, that's an existence of. Yep. The address is twenty-five Colonial Drive. One, I don't know about the south of. This is thousand and four subdivision.
Thousand and four?
Yeah, thousand and four. Give you a little background, this subdivision, big lot subdivision.
I was here. I remember it.
So irrelevant because. Subdivision, packing. Lot subdivision. Finalized in the front with the Elvis House lot. Eighty land in the back, which is about six and a half, was. And was dead. Coming into the town several times.
The fingers, the fingers. Is something cooking? Smells like something.
Well, I think I spoke about that. Yeah, you can, there's a presentation. This is, this is the proposed development on this six. That's the main. Low-density zone. I actually, I wanna share what exists. Plan set, it's a second sheet. So, this is. The land is, we did now, we did some test beds out there, sand and gravel. Infiltration pond in the northeast quadrant that collects, that picks up low drainage. Told that there's never any water in this pond. On the, the site itself does not have any wetlands. Something was initially had that. Pond may have been wet. What did? Eighteen but test holes did not. Land bring. That pond in the northeast, northwest rather. East. Property. You go there. For that. So, as I said, it's. The proposal is, it's a planned residential development and a low-density. Zone. Higher. Both of the six. Each unit will have a five in the parking space. There are eleven parking spaces. Common open area. Covering about thirty percent. Of the property, the minimum from twenty percent. Block, a lot covers approximately twenty-six percent of the property. Fire depends. There's a circular road that comes up from cul-de-sac. Service that houses in. Uh, service, that was what that. Starting of the. Old space, I guess. Walking path. Is. The drainage is being handled by the existing basin northwest.
Um, there's a proposed infiltration basin to the south that will handle that half of the site. And both basins have been sized to handle post-development flow to, for a hundred-year storm, to maintain the existing conditions. There is a building plan on that. I'd show you, but I don't, it should be in your package. There's three to four-bedroom units being proposed. I think the floor plan that's before you is a four-bedroom. Yeah, there's four variations of different finishes on the front, either roofline finishes or colors of the, of the different units. The owner, the applicant is here and can talk more to the types of buildings he's looking to build. As far as permitting, we were asked to attend the September eleventh wetland meeting. Even though there are no wetlands on site, they wanted us to confirm that and attend a meeting, so. So, I believe this needed, this will be continued until that meeting.
That's correct. We have to leave this hearing open and continue it till September eighteenth because we have got to wait until we have the final IWWC decision.
We received a letter from Connecticut Waters stating that they can service development. In addition, we received a letter from Killingley WPCA stating they can service the development. We're in the process of addressing fire marshal comments and planner comments. And the property owner is currently working with the engineering department to address some punchless items to get the road finally accepted. If you don't mind, Jonathan, I think there's a, an aerial view in there. Kinda gives you an idea of what else is around the development. Doesn't wanna completely come up, does it? But I. Yeah, so, I'd be happy to answer any questions or elaborate on anything in the design.
I don't see a detailed sheet or I'm just not seeing it with sidewalks or any kind of.
Yeah, there should be a detail in the, there's like two or three detail sheets at the very end. I think it's sheet thirteen.
Yeah, but it does, not placing it.
I'm sorry?
It's not, where is it on the, on the plan itself?
The sidewalks themselves?
Yes.
Yeah, could you go to that presentation sheet? The sidewalks continue along, the sidewalks on one side of Colonial Drive. We continue those sidewalks in the common open space area only.
So, in the residential areas, there's no sidewalks anywhere?
They're not proposed, no.
And cul-de-sacs, what about the ends? You got, uh, looks like dumpster pads at the end of each alleyway or each?
At the end of each service road, yes.
And there's, so there's no way to turn around, you gotta back out, somebody was going in the wrong way or?
That was basically one of the comments of the fire marshal, and I believe that's one of the things.
Yeah, what we have, yeah, we're working with the fire marshal on proposed turnarounds.
The fire marshal sheet is, his comments are in the packet with you.
One of the, you, out of these, you got on page, uh, what page is, five seventy point three. You've got three more, the following findings will be accomplished with the granting of a special permit for planned residential development. And as I see it, one of them, uh, looks like it incorporates features and designs to enhance public safety, minimize potential hazards. Sidewalks. The planned residential development offers architectural styling details that complements the surrounding land uses. Well, that's your architectural, I guess. But there's recreational. Oh, I saw a record, yeah. The first one, undeveloped land within the planned residential development is preserved and serves park and recreation needs. The development conserves natural resources and as applicable. So, as far as that goes, this is not elderly housing, so you've got children that'll be in here. And it seems like it should have some kind of a recreational park in this, you know, somewhere within the property to accommodate children.
Are you suggesting a playground or something of that nature?
Something along that lines. I'm not telling you what to put in there, but something more than a walkway and a couple of gazebos.
Yeah, that's something I can talk to the applicant about, sure.
Right. Where, where do you plan on putting snow? Looks like the only places you've got is between the buildings.
Yes, it would be at the, it would be at the end. Uh, it would, it would have to be between the buildings or.
I mean, it's hard to get there, I don't know if it'll snow, but. Yep, doesn't seem very practical. What is the surface of the walkway around that's being proposed?
Uh, on concrete.
You're gonna put a concrete?
Yeah, concrete sidewalk. It's a continuation from the, from the street. The concrete that was never finished along the front edge of that lot.
I think your plan's in stone dust.
Oh, I'm sorry, I assumed it was concrete. Yeah, I, yeah. And one of my other engineers worked on it, I assume.
The, it must be concrete along the road then in terms of stone dust in the.
I believe that was one of the engineer's comments.
Was he suggesting that it be concrete in the? Or was he just commenting that?
I know he was making a comment from your sidewalk and the sidewalk that was already there.
Yeah, on, on seat, sheet seven, it looks like there's a change from concrete up next to Colonial Drive. And then when you cross the driveway, it switches over to like a stone dust path. I see concrete called out in the very corner for the, that front block.
Yeah. Is, is there opposition to stone dust, having a stone dust floor?
Not, not to me, but on the inside of that, it's a walking track.
Yeah.
How wide is that?
It's five C.
Yeah, it looks like five.
And what's the, the gazebos, what's the dimensions on them or what are they?
They look, um.
H four, since it's a twelve by twelve.
Well, like, oh, yeah, I was just gonna scale them.
Were they got benches under them or are you just flat surfaces, people bring their own chairs?
They're just, they're a concrete surface and haven't gone that far, whether or not they'll be permanently affixed benches or not. I imagine the, it'd be some type of picnic table or something under there.
That was one of the details that staff called out. We'd like to see what was, the gazebo was gonna be, look like and what they expected to put into it because they also had benches along the walkway. And we'd also like to see what those benches were.
Then, you got, it looks like these are the little squares, benches that you have on the outside of the walkway?
Correct.
So, it seems like that whole inside area there, it should be some kind of a recreational or common area for residents to.
Yeah, it was just open, it was just open grass at this point, but we could certainly put some type of playground or something like that in there.
And do you have fencing around the, the, the?
Yes, yes, there's, there's four-foot-high fencing around the new pond. And then there's, there's fencing around one side of the existing pond. Because right now, I don't think there is fencing there. It's pretty heavily treed on the other side that abuts the existing house lot.
That darker shade of green is what you're showing?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's just saying that we're not, we won't be, that's existing, existing that will stay, existing trees that will stay. Where we're doing the grading, enlarging, enlarging the pond on that side is where we're putting the fence. Because it'll, mostly because there's, there's more of a slope there. It's probably a three-to-one slope.
You think there's room to put a cul-de-sac on the end, so like in this area? Between the property line and large enough for the fire department's needs?
Well, what we're gonna do for the fire department's needs were a structural surface. In other words, you could pull off onto the grass, something that you could grow grass on, but it would have a structural.
Geotext.
Geotext surface underneath.
Like gravel or something?
Yeah, it would have a geotek and gravel, but they'd have a few inches of grass on top, so you could, it's. I think that would satisfy the fire marshal, but I don't think, from what you're talking about as a turnaround, you're looking for something more permanent.
Look at it, yeah, but people that drive down there don't, there's, there's really, most people have two cars.
Yeah.
And as it is. And as it is, one looks like to me, one car's gonna be in the garage. The other one's gonna be in the people's driveways, otherwise it'd be a turnaround in their driveway, which they probably wouldn't appreciate. So, it just seems like you need to have some sort of accommodation for the tra- for public visitors or what have you.
Yeah, I'll see if we can get fitted hammerhead type turnaround there.
And then you're gonna put your dumpster pads off of there or maybe relocate them to the other end or something? Whatever you think, I don't know. What are these four, the squares with every building is a little square almost?
Uh, the ones on the south side are to, uh, infiltrators to take roof water. I think that's what you're talking about, probably.
These little squares?
Oh, the, the, those are decks, yeah.
Oh, decks, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, commission?
Um, I got some general comments for you. Um, so one is a little concerned about the parking, I know you're counting the garage space as a parking space, but if these are four bedroom houses, I would expect probably two vehicles per house, I'm expecting a lot of parking on the roadway. It'd be interesting, you guys have a few visitor spaces, but I think your parking needs to be looked at.
Okay.
Um, and I gotta double check the regs to see if we count garage parking as a space. I can't remember if we do or not versus the driveway space.
I, I believe it's counted as, uh, but it would be blocked in this.
It is blocked space, yeah, so I gotta look at that, I didn't get a chance to look at that, so that's a concern, I'm just bringing up for your request. Um, I don't see anything about, um, like bus, bus drop area, centralized bus collection for bus routing, uh, centralized mail drops, are you gonna do that in this development? Are you expecting them to go in front of every house, how are you gonna do that?
Um, I would think it, it's private, so I would think it'd have to be a central one.
Just Tony's out there for you to look at and bring back comments and try to address them.
Um.
Can I just comment to that, there is a national delivery planning standard. I just got in the packet, I can send you one.
Okay.
That's not why I brought it up, but, I mean, it was good.
Yeah, it was good, it was a good timing.
Yeah. Uh, maintenance agreement on, on, I assume the rest of the roads inside development are gonna stay private? I don't know if you wanna make those public roads or not.
This, this will stay private and yet there will be.
So, is there a shared maintenance agreement, homeowners agreement, how's that being addressed?
There will be, yeah.
Yep, we need, we need to make sure that's submitted to the town, so that's seen. Um, you're using the infiltration basin up on the northwest corner? Uh, is there any information submitted to the town engineer for review on that? You said it was existing basin constructed in two thousand and four?
He's, uh, um, he's reviewing those.
I don't see any details on this drawing, right?
On the, uh.
There's no, you're showing details on the basin on the south corner, south corner, and all those corners, I was just preliminary grading, there's nothing about, you know, the size of it, the overflow, anything, I know it's.
That's all in the drainage cals that we submitted to him.
Yeah, we don't have them, they're not part, I mean, we didn't see them, sometimes we do get them, but I didn't see it here for review.
I mean, we did, we did submit them, so.
Okay. Yeah, um, and on your letters with Connecticut Water and Sewer?
Yeah.
Um, they counted, I don't know if this is wrong or not in my math, but they said sixty-four total beds versus one hundred and twenty-eight, which was your detail showing four bedroom units?
I, I told them four bedroom units and they have their own way of figuring, figuring out, um, how they, they sized it, but, uh, I, I mean, I, I can, I can confirm that with them.
You can double check, cause both of them, both of them, you know, put sixteen duplicates, three to four bedrooms each.
Okay.
For sixty-four units, I just wanna make sure that those letters are corrected. Uh, and the last comment is the, uh, area to the west. I apologize, I can't see the numbers, but right in the centralized, that's a three to one slope, I presume, going down to the west?
To the east.
I'm sorry, to the east. Behind the units right in central, I don't know what the numbers are, I can't say.
Probably, yes.
Yeah, yeah, there's those, those stones out there, right behind the deck. Um, is there any concern? I mean, there is a concern on my end as far as safety with residents trying to go around their deck, walking on that slope, there's no flat area behind their decks. You got the slope right up to the deck area.
Does it say three to one?
I, I can't, I don't know, it doesn't say.
I think it's, um, I think it's steeper, I mean, I think it's, uh, less than three to one.
Either way, and if it's borders, it says three to one?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, but it's right up to the deck.
Yeah, it is, it's three to one.
So residents, you know, can't walk around their deck, can't walk around the house, can't go back that area without walking down that slope, that's somewhat of a safety concern.
Okay.
So that's something you should look at as well, please.
Yeah, we might get a soften that with a small wall or something. And push it away from the decks.
We've got, I had a concern with your biggest retention pond.
Yep.
Okay.
The existing one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, you only have fencing around like one section of it?
Correct.
Should they not be fencing around the whole thing if it's a detention pond for safety of the neighborhood?
Yeah, I mean, it's this, it's the same detention pond that's been there, more or less, and, I mean, we, we can, yeah, yeah. But we, we can, I, I think it was just a matter of not trying to disturb that, that tree side on, uh, existing vegetation there, but we can, we can do that.
You also need to provide access for cleaning like you do on the southern pond.
Yeah.
The maintenance of it should be part of the HOA. Is open basement addressed?
There.
Twenty percent meets, meets it?
Some of the original plans, one of the comments, they called out some of the drainage basins, it's open space, so we wanted that corrected as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say ponds are open space.
Agreed.
All right, it's in the calcul-, that was one, like, it's in the calculation, ponds are open space.
I suppose if they make that center section recreational, that would be considered open space. What'd you say, Emery, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's considered the active open, open space, and the passive open spaces is, uh, uh, all the tree area around ponds and.
It's, according to our regulations, um, in independent residential living, not less than thirty percent uh, nor more than fifty percent of the open space land, land area shall be dedicated to active recreational use. And all presidential, uh, planned residential developments preserve open space areas in perpetuity in the amount of a minimum of twenty percent for I R L, so twenty percent of the parcel.
And this plan currently calls out twenty-nine point seven.
That's inclusive of the passive, which is the ponds.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah. It clearly states passive open area shall preserve significant strands of trees, stream belts, historic, traditional, or signi- significant uses, structures, architectural elements in bloodhazard areas where appropriate and may be subject to the town acquiring conservation rights and/or pedestrian thoroughfare rights.
Anybody else? John? Uh, staff? This, is there a drawing with the butters?
It should be on the, uh, the first drawing with the, uh, sheet, probably sheet one or, yeah, that one.
Trying to do it here and it's like, I can't see it.
Do you have a full size sheet, no?
No. I don't need to see, you got, you've got it? Oh, I just wanna see that you have it, this is part of requirement, special permit. Is it traffic information, traffic analysis, everybody?
Uh, there was, not when we met with staff.
Did it require it?
No.
On a special permit use, it recalls for it? I don't think it would be too.
I don't think it'd be too involved, but like I said, we, we didn't, we didn't hire a traffic coordinator because it wasn't required.
And part of that is because of the recent court cases that's saying if it has been zoned that way, that consideration has already been taken into consideration.
Really, we did that?
Yeah.
So they say. And you spoke to him about the design of the buildings, he would.
If I were, you had a discussion about the design of the buildings.
Okay, anybody else, anybody from the public wanna speak to this? Go ahead, today, Mike, identify yourself and the address.
What's the green light? Okay, my name's Charles Alteri, I live at twenty Colonial Drive, and I do have a couple of concerns. You guys are talking about putting thirty-two families on a street that only three families currently use? And you mentioned snow removal? So that top street right there is where all the snow from that street ends up. So where's all the rest of that snow gonna go? When the guy plows, he puts it right at that top street, right there, sits there all winter.
You're talking about the cul-de-sac?
The cul-de-sac. So, that white area to the left of the green, that's my house. All right? When the guy does plow, that's where he puts all the snow. You're putting a whole nother street with thirty-two families in there, where you gonna put that snow? Where's all those cars gonna go? You guys had mentioned parking or turnarounds. I say these things need to be addressed. That's a, that's a lot more cars coming into a very small street, there's three families on that street right now. You're putting thirty-two more families? Four floor bedroom houses, that's a lot of people. Just wanted to make my point. The snow needs to go somewhere. It's gonna have to get trucked out of there or whatever, and like you said about the fire department, they're not gonna be able to get in and out of there. That's all I got.
Anybody else? Are these all paved surfaces?
I'm sorry?
Are they all paved surfaces?
Correct, yes.
So they all meet, does the subdivision regs, uh?
Yeah, twenty-four foot wide.
And the, the construction?
Yes, the, the cross section, yeah.
Yeah, pretty much. Sorry.
You're good. Hi, my name is Jody Clun, um, I'm also at twenty Colonial Drive, um, right next door to this development, and, and I'm devastated about this whole thing. Um, as Charlie had said, we, we live at a house where right now there are three families. And you're talking about bringing in thirty-two more families, each one with multiple cars. Um, it's going to impact traffic on our street. Um, we're going to, it's gonna impact the noise level on our street if you're having families with kids. Um, we're talking at least sixty-four more cars, assuming each family has two, with a four bedroom, um, setup. You're probably talking kids who are driving age, at least in some of them, which means more cars than that. Um, we're gonna have the school buses in, in the cul-de-sac, we're gonna have, uh, if, if they have guests and there's not enough parking, those people are gonna wind up parking lining the cul-de-sac. Um, it, this is such a huge disruption to something that has traditionally been a very quiet street, which is why we love it, um, I've been there about eight years and, and a big part of why I moved there is how quiet it is. Um, so this is, is gonna take over the entire street. Um, I'm also not sure what you were talking about with continuing the existing sidewalk, because there is a little piece of sidewalk on one side of the street for the house that is actually on Upper Maple, but at the corner of Upper Maple and Colonial, there are no other sidewalks along that cul-de-sac at all. So I don't know if you guys are gonna be putting those in or what you're gonna be doing, but this is, this is all gonna be incredibly disruptive. Um, and, and I'm, I'm seriously against this whole thing. Um, I know it's gonna be continued and there's more information to be found out, I unfortunately can't be here for next month's meeting, cause I'll be out of state. Um, but this is, I mean, you're talking, making something like ten times the amount of traffic and disruption that we have now, and I just, I think that's a horrible thing to do to this area.
Is there really lighting proposed?
There isn't currently, uh, we talked, I talked to the applicant about maybe doing some decorative lighting in the, in the center, there's nothing on these plans yet though.
Outside lighting shall be provided on the site as appropriate to the project in order to eliminate building entries and sidewalk approaches as well as parking areas. And then sidewalks shall be provided and shall interconnect all dwelling units, off-street parking, planned residential development facilities and the town road where frontage is calculated.
Do you typically require sidewalks along all, all the streets in these type of developments?
At least one side typically.
One side, okay. And, and you typically require street lights?
Typically. I mean, this is in the regs, I'm reading.
Yeah, and no, I, I just, I just, uh, when you, you have like, you know, two or four of these houses at the end, if, if you have some how, if you have some lights around that circular area.
Well, this is, this is P R Ds.
Yeah.
So with P R D.
So if you were to show like a light plan, if you're relying on, um, lights at the front entrances, for instance, to light those walkways or approaches and parking areas, um, just showing that on the plan.
Right, I can do that, yep.
Well, but it's saying it's required.
Yep, and so I, that's where I'm, I think it needs to be demonstrated on.
Yeah, I think we need to just demonstrate, like, if we, these, the, the lights at each house, and then there may, there may be a dark spot where you need one at the end or something like that.
A dark sky compliant?
Yeah.
Or burglar.
Lights on the, in that cul-de-sac existing now.
Right, well, see, this is under meeting, plan residential. You have to be, the regulations.
No, I'm just saying they may need lights more because we don't have any on the existing street.
It's, uh, fire hydrants being proposed, it's got.
There are, there are a couple there, proposed, yeah.
Cause it's, it's spelled out here. Oh, I'm sorry.
I promise it's late and I wanna go home too, so. Um, my name is Carol Donnelly, I live at one oh three four Upper Maple Street and, um, I hopped the border five years ago and became a nutmegger, and this is probably out of all the places I've lived in my life, killingly feels like home, I love this community, I love the people. I'm all for progress, I'm all for building, but that's too much, it's too much. Too many houses, too many condos, I don't know what they are, it's too much for, for that area, it doesn't belong there. Not that much. And I'm just concerned, because I started over five years ago and I, you know, built myself back up, I'm just a little concerned about how that's gonna affect my property values. That's all. It sounds selfish, but too much, just.
Go to the mic, please. Me, it's for the record.
Charles Alteri, it's okay. I'm new to all this. Do we know, are these gonna be owner occupied, are they gonna be rentals, is this gonna be? What, what is it gonna be? You know?
Well, if you wanna speak, you go to the mic and speak.
Randy Brown, Town of Lisbon, commission member of the Lisbon Town. Um, this development, good development is good development, I'm not here to destroy your property values, I'm not here to worry about snow, we're gonna do good development, we're gonna, it's gonna be an HOA, it's gonna be taken care of. You want lighting, we're gonna do lighting. Um, I might keep ten of them for myself, but I'm gonna be selling them to people, you know, like first time home buyers, you know, people that are, you know, just getting married, people that actually wanna have a piece of property, people that actually wanna get somewhere and then move from this place to go to actually buy a house like all y'all have, y'all have nice houses. But somebody's gotta start somewhere to give them a place to actually go. So I, I, this is what I do for a living. Again, I'm a planning and zoning member in Lisbon. I do developments. I buy them with Bob. I develop them. I build them myself. I do everything myself. I don't, I listen to all your opinions, and I take that to heart, and I try to do good development. I do not try to do this poorish stuff. I try to do top-notch stuff. And if you wanna see stuff that I've done, you can look at Gavin Way in Lisbon, Danica Estates in Griswold. You can look at Pauline Place in Griswold. You can look at Hartley Estates in Canterbury. I've done them all. And I've done it. My name's behind them, so I just want you guys to understand that I'm not gonna come to try to ruin your, your, if anything, I'm gonna make your, your value go up because by putting something there that's gonna increase your value, because there'll be play sets for kids and all that stuff. I'm trying to increase your value, not take away from your value. I don't want low-income housing next to your nice houses. I'm not trying to do that to you. Just want you to know that. If you want, I will give you my cell phone number, and you can call me or text me twenty-four hours a day. And if you don't believe me, if, well, I'm just telling you, everybody that I've built for, everybody I've built for in all those towns has my personal cell phone number. So you know.
My name is Greg Seetoy, and I live at ten forty Upper Maple Street. One question, will the retention ponding be? How much water is gonna be in there? And what about bugs and mosquitoes and things like that? On the, the top left-hand corner, my house, my back, uh, button to the.
That pond will, that pond doesn't hold water now, and it won't hold water in the future. It's just, it's, it's all gravel. It just goes in the ground. It's gonna infiltrate. I mean, there may be there water immediately following a storm, but it's, it'll be gone.
You gotta, you gotta speak kind of.
Idiot builder. It's Hinckley gravel, and if anybody knows about Hinckley gravel, Hinckley gravel's one of the best gravels there is, and I don't anticipate any water sitting there more than twenty-four hours in a, in a, in a eight-uh, eight-inch rainstorm. There's not gonna have any water sitting there for over twenty-four hours.
I guess my next concern is how much water they're gonna take out on there? Are they gonna make a fence for them on the trees left there? Are they all gonna tear down all the trees?
Yeah, Randy, I can show them the.
Yeah, where the, where the houses are going, we are gonna clear all of that, but with the green in the front by the cul-de-sac, you're saying, yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna plant new trees there and create, you know, a, a place for people to go, a safe place, a playscape, or, you know, a place where the community can actually go, plus the cul-de-sac people can go and, and, and enjoy a, an afternoon on a nice day, you know? And, uh, yes, we are gonna clear it because we actually have to regrade the whole area, so we have to clear it and create the new place that the property is, you know, so.
When do I require a fence?
I didn't understand what you said.
You know, after, uh, we get low boom boom, uh, when you take all the trees down, I would like to require a fence to, uh, to plant on the tree.
You want a fence instead of a tree?
He wants, so, so up on the northwest corner, if you're gonna clear around that pond and you're gonna take the trees down, he'd like to have a privacy fence, the trees planted back. Yeah, that, that, that's what he's talking about.
We gotta do is we gotta clear what we have to do to make it work. I mean, I don't wanna take down any more trees than I have to. I don't really wanna do that. I love trees.
So, 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 hold, hold, hold on. So, so, we, we got his comments. This is a public comment period, and we understand. So again, what, you need to look at the northwest pond corner, where we talked about that. If there's any clearing and gravel, we're gonna look at adjacent neighbor issues and maybe request additional buffering be planted back in to address the concerns.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, so, so it's not, it's inadequate in the plan right now. You need to demonstrate that on the plan for it, yes. So before you get into the back and forth of, yes, sir.
Right. So five seventy point five point one three landscaping requires a comprehensive landscape plan, and it goes into great detail about what's required.
There is a landscape plan in the set.
But it's a meet exactly what the regulations spell out.
Yes.
Did you hear diameter of the trees?
Sheed nine and ten.
It's, it's missing some information. You need to look at the regs and look at what's on the plan. You're missing some information regarding trees, and you're still missing some information again on the full property as far as the development, especially that northwest pond.
Yeah, buffering.
All right. I mean, it does specify tree sizes and tree locations.
Yeah, it's, it's very, but all I'm asking is you meet what it says here. And obviously buffering with the neighbors.
Yeah, our, our intent honestly was to leave as much of that northwest corner as natural as, as we can.
If that's sufficient, if you can supplement it if it's necessary. You know, if it's, if you got a bounce spot, supplement it with something.
Understood.
Coniferous or some, whatever it calls for. I'm not. Uh, it sounds like you got other stuff that you gotta be doing for another meeting anyway. Anybody else wanna speak to this application? This time? Commission members?
No, but I would suggest that Mr. DeLuca, you meet with the staff.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, staff, any more questions? Twenty and thirty thousand square feet, I think. But the PRD is its own. PRD, PRD is its own, so you have to go into PRD to, to meet the regs for this project. Five seventy is a PRD, yeah. Okay, um, you already got, you know, pretty much what you need to have done.
Good. I'll meet with staff and.
All right, have a motion to continue, please? Don makes the motion, second by Mr. Huko. Yes, ma'am. Uh, this, the September eighteen.
September eighteen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Continue.
The next one is the chairman. I gotta excuse myself because I think I got a conflict because I know one of the applicants.
Okay.
So Mike.
Bet you can't leave, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we just have you hang out. Yep.
Thank you.
Now I'm misplaced my next. Okay, special permit application twenty-three thirteen eighteen. Jessica O'Brien, DBA Evergreen Farms.
Color up. I sent that to you, right? Yes, please.
Mr. Tebow has represented them. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Norm Tebow, Killingley Engineering Associates. I am representing Jessica O'Brien, doing business at Evergreen Farms. I'm here under the regulations that, uh, we worked on with, with the guidance from this commission, specifically section four ten point one point two R, which is for wedding and event venues. So, um, with that in mind, there are a couple of other sections we have to look at as well. Section seven hundred under special permits, and, and section four seventy for site planned. So when you go into the special permit section, it does reference, and it does, it does sort of send you back to section four seventy to discuss the plan requirements. This is a, a property of slightly over five acres. Currently, there is a, a single residential structure. As you can see in the front, a separate garage. Then there's a, about midway up in the back there, there's a small barn. And then the facility is going to be located toward the rear of the property, which is a former chicken coop, or as the, as the street card refers to it, they call it a poultry house. This is about eleven thousand square feet. Half of the building, the, the western side of it is used for a rental mini storage facility. It is, it is permitted as such, and that will remain as a, as a storage facility. It is separate and fire-walled from the proposed wedding facility, an event facility, which is on the, on the eastern side of the building. We have received approval from the Connecticut DOT. I believe you have that approval letter in your packages. We've also received approval from the Northeast District Department of Health, and, and actually the, the septic system was actually completed by Leonard Zadora and Sons last week. So that's been done as well. With this project, what, and well, one of the, one of the requirements with the regulations that we put together was that we had to prepare a statement of use, which was, which was also included with the application package. And I'm just gonna read some of the excerpts from that. It's not all that, that extensive, so I just would like to read it into the record.
Excuse me, Norm?
Yes.
If you can read that into record, that'd be very good. I did tell you that we didn't get it. For some reason.
You didn't get it.
We didn't get it, and I asked you for it. You said it was a.
Yeah, and, and I sent it a second time. I don't know why. Okay.
Didn't put the application.
All right, well, I, I, I have it here.
I'll just make copies of it afterwards.
And I'll hand it out for your, for your use. So, uh, statement of use, Jessica O'Brien, doing business at Evergreen Farm, has submitted an application to the Town of Killingley Planning and Zoning Commission to permit an event wedding venue on a five-point zero three-five acre property at two oh four Hartford Pike. This application is submitted in accordance with section four ten point one point two R, the Town of Killingley zoning regulations as permitted use, subject to the special standards applicable to the use outlined in that section. To that end, the statement of use is presented. The proposed event facility intends to hold one event weekly with a maximum of one hundred and twenty-five guests. Events will be held in an existing agricultural building that was historically used as a chicken coop, more recently for rentable storage areas. Half the building will remain as storage, and the eastern half will be converted to the proposed facility. The building will retrofit with restrooms and a serving air, uh, area for caterers. A dedicated septic system in well will be installed specifically for the facility. Events will be catered only with no food preparation on site. Food serving area, there will be access at the rear of the building away from guest access. There will be a caterer that holds the permit from the local health department for food service to the event facility. All plates, glassware, and linens will be transported off-site by the caterer for cleaning. Trash generated by the facility will be disposed of in a screen dumpster at the rear of the building as shown on the design plans. Wedding ceremonies will be held in a dedicated landscaped area with an archway will be positioned in the northeastern portion of the property. All aspects of the event facility will be located greater than the minimum separating distances required by the regulations from any residential building on adjacent properties. All events will be limited to the time stated in the plans and in the regulations, which are ten AM to ten PM Sunday through Thursday, ten AM to eleven PM on Fridays and Saturdays. All music for events will be held within the building, except for any music for ceremonies, which should be limited to low-level background or acoustic music traditionally played for wedding ceremonies. Music shall not exceed the state-mandated sound ordinances at the property boundaries. A bridal suite and a groom suite will be provided for the wedding party at the facility for privacy and to prepare for the ceremony. The facility will be constructed on two levels, with the lower level being utilized for dinner and dancing, and an up, upper perimeter balcony for guests to relax and overlook and enjoy the experience on the lower level. The existing driveway entrance of the property will be improved to accommodate two-way traffic. Since the property is accessed from Route one oh one, the plans have been submitted to the Connecticut DOT for review, and obviously, since this statement of use was written, we did receive approval. The driveway width will be enlarged to twenty-four feet, paved for the first one hundred and fifty feet, painted stop bar and thirty-inch stop sign in accordance with Connecticut DOT requirements. The paved portion will also have a painted yellow center line for the first fifty feet. At the end of the pavement, the driveway will transition to a gravel surface that leads to the proposed parking adjacent to the building. Drainage will be via sheet flow from the west east across the driveway. The design proposes a two-foot-wide by eighteen-inch-deep stone shoulder on the eastern side of the driveway. All drainage will ultimately finish to a stone wall at the property boundary adjacent to the existing agricultural field further east off-site. As with the driveway, the parking is proposed to be gravel with the exception of three paved handicapped accessible spaces. The accessible spaces will be adjacent to a concrete sidewalk that will be used to access the main entrance to the facility on the eastern end of the building. Additional spaces for the owners are available at the residence. The owners are also employees at the venue. Up to forty-two cars may enter the facility at the start of the event over the first, course of the first half hour if there was a maximum attendance of one hundred and twenty-five patient, uh, patrons, not patients. This is seldom the case. Traffic leaving the event will typically be spaced out over a couple of hours as guests leave at different times throughout the evening or afternoon. As the facility is accessed via a state highway, the impacts will be minimal. The applicant plans to maintain an existing area planted with Christmas trees between the residence and the facility. Ultimately, these will serve as a buffer to the residence, which is owned by the applicant. The property is bounded by an agricultural field to the east, forested terrain on the north and west, and is set downgrading into the terrain, which also serves as a natural buffer.
So, Norm, we're kind of parking in the gravel. They don't, do they define a gravel?
Well, there's an existing gravel surface there now. It's, it's really compacted. It's been used to, to access around the building for, since the fifties. It's a really hard traffic-bound surface. It's just gonna be expanded a little bit better. They'll, they'll put down some stone dust in the areas where, where it's needed, just to kind of level it out right now because it's a little uneven in, in a lot of spots. But it is, I've driven around the building a number of times. It's, it's, it's very accessible around it just because of the, the nature of the surface.
Pedestrian traffic is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, with, with the stone dust surface, and I, and I've seen this also. I know they do this at, at, at two facilities that we, we permitted. We did one in Hampton, Stonehurst Hampton Valley. They've got the stone dust parking lots, which, which do very well. And, and they, I find that people don't typically have any issues walking upon them. And, and obviously, the handicap spaces that we have in the front are, are gonna be utilized by anyone who might be, you know, elderly or, or wheelchair-bound or anything of that nature where they, where they can't travel over longer spaces. As far as the site plan requirements, if we go through section four seventy, the architectural plans, I've given you some, some schematics of, of what they're, they're looking like. Maybe the exterior just go to be improved by adding, you know, some, some amenities like the sliding barn doors and a little bit of an overhang. We've got a deck going on in the back, which can be accessed from the second floor, which also provides fire egress as well. He has been working with the fire marshal and with the building official as, as they've, they've started some of the improvements on the interior, and it's been in conjunction with Randy. and it's been in conjunction with Randy and with Tracy as they as they move along, just to make sure that they're doing things accordingly to the building code and to the into the fire code. As far as public health and safety, as we did discuss pedestrian access and egress, the traffic circulation will accommodate emergency vehicles. We've got twenty-four-foot-wide driveway, twenty-four-foot-wide aisles between the the parked cars, and it's it's accessible around the perimeter of the building. The storm drainage is is going to sheet flow as it does currently. There really isn't gonna be a whole lot of changes in the surface, except for a little bit of pavement at the off of Route one oh one. The the stormwater, it's a very small drainage area because right about where the house is, it's a it's a it's a high point in the terrain. So, from about the house over to the driveway, it drains in that direction, and everything drains off to the west on the western side of the house and kind of where the barn is, it all drains off in the opposite direction. As far as noise abatement goes, there are considerable vegetated buffers around the perimeter of the property. There is the agricultural field to the right, so there really aren't any neighbors per se that would be disturbed. I'm gonna grab one more thing, excuse me a second. I do have a letter I want to read into the record. It's it's actually been notarized, and this is actually addressed to you, Anne Marie. I just received this today. Dear Director and members of the Planning and Zoning Committee, I am writing on behalf of Evergreen Farms located at two oh four Hartford Pike, Dable, Connecticut. As the property owner who lives directly across from the venue, I would like it known that I strongly approve and believe this would be a great asset to the Town of Killingley. I believe this venue will not have a negative impact on the neighborhood, and I am hopeful it will bring much-needed traffic to Killingley by showcasing what our town has to offer. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out. Kindest regards, Kerry Van Ass. And it was notarized. So, a- as far as any any potential impacts to to property values, I I really can't imagine this having any any negative impacts. It is a a very low-impact use, and and obviously, if they have a wedding with the maximum of one hundred and twenty-five people, you may see, you know, forty, forty-five cars at any given time going to the facility. Very, a very short-term impact, though, to the to the road, and it is a state road as well. There really aren't any pollution-related activities here. That's four seventy point nine point five discusses any any type of pollutants that might be generated as a result of this, and I I don't see that as an issue. Four seventy point nine point six landscaping and screening, significant screening, and also in the the northeast corner where the where the actual wedding ceremonies would take place. They have also provided, already, they planted a lot of evergreens on the property boundary in that area. As far as the architectural and aesthetic impact, I think that's that's kind of something that, you know, we talked about when we were going through the to the regulations here and about the reuse of agricultural properties and aesthetically, and how does it fit within the town and and within this agricultural zone, too. So, you know, with utilizing this this former poultry house and and sort of recycling it for for this type of use, I think is a great use. It's not really changing the character of the area at all. The the outward appearance of it is gonna be slightly augmented and improved a little bit, just to make it a little more visually attractive. But they they want to keep the the red color of it, everything about it. When you when you drive by and you see it, if, you know, if you get a glimpse of it sort of in the background, it's going to be remain substantially the same. I do have some photographs that I I sent to Jonathan of some of the work that they're doing in the interior I'd like to share with you because I I think it's I think it's it's quite beautiful. I think they've done quite a nice job there. And if... So, that is just, that's a dressing room area they're gonna use for, you know, some of the wedding party if they want to change. That's the interior of it. They've opened it up. As you can see, there are two floors, so the lower level is gonna be where the where the actual serving and the people go, they'll be dancing and so forth. The tables will be set up on that lower level. On the upper level, you can see to the right and to the left, there's these balconies that they've got there. They're gonna have just, you know, chairs and some small tables up along the balcony. So, if people want to get away from sort of the 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 hubbub of the wedding and a bunch of people, they can just kind of go up there and relax. That is the bridal suite. That is the groom suite. They've selected these sort of like barber chairs that I think are kind of cool-looking. Those are those are the original floors that were up there.
How come the groom only gets two chairs?
Well, there's there's more going on there, but that's that's another view of of the balcony that that's overlooking. That's all the original wood there, not not the ceilings and so forth, but the timber, that all the timber is original in there. It's it's in remarkably good condition. It was, it's 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 been very well cared for. I I believe it was built in nineteen fifty-four, so it's not a terribly old structure, but it it was built very well. They put the 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 metal ceiling up there just for a a visual aspect of it and actually, you know, and and, you know, the little panels that they've got for the, you know, at the overlook, too, I think is a is a pretty nice touch. I think that was all I had for pictures. But that's sort of the flavor of, you know, what, you know, the the direction they're going there. I really think that the, you know, they've really kind of preserved the character of of the 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 poultry house or chicken coop, whatever you want to call it. And, you know, from a, I and I just think it's going to be a great addition to the Town of Killingley. I think, you know, there's nothing like this available in the town. People go out of town now, they go to Hampton, or they go to Putnam, or they go to Canterbury, or Brooklyn. And, you know, it'd be nice to keep some of those people here in town, spend their money here.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Tebow, is there any, so I assume that the events will be during the day and at night. Is there any additional lighting enhancements for safety at night on the exterior of the building or the parking lot?
They're they're just doing, they've got like these sconce lighting. It's gonna be on the exterior of the building. I think they're gonna be on the, they're sort of like the the lantern style that hang down. They come out from the building and they shine down. They they'll, I I believe that they're gonna be plenty to light up, to safely light the parking area. It's not a huge area.
Right, because it wouldn't have shown on the drawings or on your architecturals or anything? And what about down by the wedding venue area itself?
You know, the wedding, the venue area itself is, the ceremonies will be during the day. They're not gonna have any evening, any evening ceremonies. They'll be they'll be lighting on the exterior of the building just to kind of light the entrance for people when they're leaving and so forth, and the the walkways and the pathways will be sufficiently lit.
Okay. Any additional signage up front?
Um... I do, right there, I don't know if you can zoom in on that, John, that sign right there. Yeah, it's right right adjacent to the front entrance, they're gonna put it.
Yep.
And I've got a, I've got a dimensioned in in what the logo is going to look like on that sign.
Okay, I don't know if I missed it. And what about just general access to the other half of the building? I didn't see any, you know, the parking areas or drives going to, how do they access?
They they go around the back to access that. There's a loading dock on the back of the building that they use to access.
So, one of those, one of those docks, drives on the back goes to the loading dock?
Yes.
Okay, that's your interest.
They they're loading, well, they're not loading, the the loading dock is for is for the the storage facility.
That's what I meant. That's what I'm saying, how do I, how do they access the storage side of this building?
Yeah, from that loading dock. The the actual, you you see that the second driveway's, the turnaround on the right-hand side, on the right-hand side of the loading dock. That's that's the, they back up there and they load into the into the catering area.
Okay, yeah, I was more about continued access to the other half that's staying.
Yeah, that's that's staying there.
That first driveway.
Yeah, and they could also access it from the far end of the building, too. The far western end, there's there's actually a a larger door there, so if people have larger items to to that they can bring in over there, that they they access from right at that point. It's a very, very low-traffic thing. You know, he may have maybe, you know, one person come a week or something. Most of the people that put stuff there, it it goes in there and they they don't even access it until they're ready to take it out of there. It's a, there's there's very, very little traffic at all to that.
John? Is this a year-round facility?
Well, I think ultimately it would be, I I don't suspect that they're gonna be doing much in the winter, like January, February. It's it's a big place to keep heated and and, you know, get a lot of open spaces there, and they 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 put in all the new mini splits and everything in the back, but, you know, the for the for the cooling and so forth. But their thoughts are that, you know, most likely, it's gonna probably be like maybe a spring-to-fall type facility.
Anybody from the public want to speak to this application? Staff? Any more questions at all? I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
For a second? Second by Brian. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poser intentions? Okay, let's quote. Thank you, Norm.
Thank you, and thank you for your help during this whole process of developing the regs, too. So, it was, it was super helpful.
Long process.
Yeah.
Okay. Unfinished business, special permit number twenty-three thirteen oh eight, The Craft Group, Seventy Waterigan Road, eight point three acres, general commercial. Request to open a cannabis establishment. I have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-three thirteen oh eight, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thirteen zero eight.
Twenty-three dash thirteen zero eight, sorry. With the following condition, that all all local rules to be issued by regulatory authorities, building, the fire department, et cetera, to make sure those get finalized and submitted to the staff, working with staff to make sure they're in the file and the permit. And the only additional was that security be present during deliveries. Any deliveries of any qualities during those hours, so in normal working hours. Sorry, what you said during the staff. That's it.
Second? Second by Michael. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
The medical community has been actively studying the use of marijuana for medical purposes, and there is growing evidence supporting the potential therapeutic benefits marijuana has found to be effective in treating conditions such as chronic pain, epilepsy, multiple sclerosis, and nausea associated with chemotherapy. Additionally, some studies suggest it may have potential benefits for mental health conditions like anxiety and PTSD. However, it's important to note that the medical community recognizes the need for further research to fully understand the benefits and potential risks associated with marijuana use. While marijuana is generally considered safe for medical use when prescribed and monitored by healthcare professionals, it can still have side effects. Then may, these may include short-term memory impairment, impaired coordination, and decreased heart rate. Additional... Additionally, inhaling marijuana, smoke, can have similar health effects as smoking tobacco. Regarding the idea that marijuana is a dangerous drug or a gateway to number four drug use, I think it is, it's essential to approach this topic with scientific evidence. The notion of marijuana being a gateway drug has been widely debated, and current research does not provide conclusive evidence to support this claim. It's critical to consider the individual factors such as personal history, environmental, and examining substance abuse patents. Now, I think that that pretty much nails where we are presently. However, I haven't read one medical report recently, and certainly, this is this is only up until two thousand twenty-one. This is out of GPT chat. I haven't read anything in the last couple of years. Matter of fact, I've read stuff contrary, where they're saying, look, the long-term use of this, especially on youth, can have detrimental effects mentally. I have not read a report that states researchers have different findings, and the medical community seems to be saying that some potential or properties seem to be beneficial, which that states. Now, in our separation requirements that we've adopted, a schoolhouse, a school, house of worship, library, public playgrounds, parks, recreation facilities, daycare centers, nurseries, municipal buildings, Board of Education, facilities open to the public. There's a separation where you can't be there near them. Now, I think that this is all reflective of society trying to protect children in particular. Big Y is a facility where not only adults go into, children go in there, and probably enough children go in there. Pardon?
Nobody can, nobody can.
All right. I I know that. This is my way of looking at it. So, I I really think that this is a bad mix. I know that you you've got a radius of the the five hundred feet. We've got the option of of expanding it to fifteen hundred. I'm not even going there. I think the five hundred feet just isn't adequate for what's taking place with a supermarket in the same building. So...
Okay.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be able to support this.
Okay, roll call, please. Yell.
Brian Card?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Motion passes. Hey, um... Special permit application twenty-three thirteen eighteen, Jessica O'Brien, Evergreen Farms, two oh four Hartford Pike, JRS map one oh eight, lot thirty-four. Anybody have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Oh, second?
Any further discuss?
He's excused.
Oh, you're excused, that's right.
Yeah.
Uh, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Brian Card?
Yes.
Yes. Adoption of minutes, workshop minutes, and regular meeting minutes, July seventeenth. Motion?
Hold on, you have new business.
What? What? I missed it?
You missed it.
Maybe that was for a reason. Tired, I want to go.
That's just to resc- that's just to schedule.
I know. I forgot it. You're right. Application twenty-three thirteen nineteen subdivision Cathy A Hess, Bruce and Bender Weeks, landowners, two weeks' lane, GIS map two one zero eight, lot thirty point one, one point zero six into, uh, six acres, Alzad Overlay District, divide lot thirty into two parcels. Also, a lot line adjustment between lot thirty and lot thirty point one will be necessary to create a conforming lot. Receive application, schedule application for action on Monday, September eighteenth. Does it have to go before wetlands? Does it have to be ready, to be complete?
I don't think, this is just a lot line adjustment. It, this...
It's a subdivision, so...
Well, it's a subdivision, but it is basically, the house is there, the buildings are there, everything's there. It's just what it is. The person has the house on a parcel of leased land. They're going to buy the land underneath their house. But because of the way it's set, uh, it's set up in these parcels, we have to have a subdivision. So would there would be no need, would there be a need for this to go before wetlands at this point, I would say?
The Hess one?
Yeah.
Talking about?
It's already been pre-existing.
It's pre-existing.
It's not on the, it's not on the lakeside itself anyways.
I, I'll, I will double-check the regulations for the...
I mean, you got the other one that has to go before wetlands. There's no wetlands on the property.
Some, the, I have to double-check the subdivision regs because there might not be a requirement for a public hearing, but there might be a requirement for wetlands if they're within two hundred feet, regardless of construction or not. So I'll just double-check.
Forward, you can...
Yep.
And if it needs, and if it needs to be wetlands, it'll be September eleventh anyways.
Have a motion to schedule.
Yes. Motion to schedule September eighteenth.
Do they have a second? Second, Mike. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose abstentions? Okay. Adoption of minutes, July seventeenth. I wasn't present, so...
Motion to accept.
Uh, second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose or abstentions? Workshop, if needed, business park. We don't need that anymore.
Well, we were going to schedule that for a hearing.
Don't we do that at a regular meeting?
We did not, we did not.
This is the regular meeting.
This is the regular meeting. We did, we could not do that during the workshop, workshop. You don't take votes during workshops.
Okay, okay. Somebody want to schedule for a hearing, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, public hearing for the business park draft regulations? Second?
Second.
John makes the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose abstentions? None. Correspondence? Done. Department reports? Done. Economic Development? Economic Development? Got ten minutes before eleven.
Real quickly.
August eighth, the, there was a public hearing for the sale of one twenty-five Alexander Parkway for a data center campus that involves two other private parcels. Gloria's Kitchen is a bakery and sandwich shop with an anticipated opening on September, late September, at seventy-two Main Street. The RFP for design-to-construction phase for the Brickyard Plaza has begun. Selection will be finalized August twenty-sixth. The Benjamin, Parker Benjamin Group for one forty Maine finally received their final approval level, letters from a shippo and that'll button things up in that building before winter. Congressman Courtney made a visit touring Killingley on August fifteenth in support of the EPA Brownfield and NEA grant awards. And we submitted recertification for sustainable CT this month.
Town Council?
From the special town council meeting on August first, Karina Tori was looking for a reappointment to Inland and Wetland Water Course Commission. She's been on it for eleven years. That was approved at the next meeting. From the building commission, reported KMS is on schedule. The beam was signed. One point one million for the ceilings to be, tiles to be replaced was removed. Westfield Avenue, project is moving forward. The, um, the, um, the helical tiles being installed to repair the outside shell. If you want to do a walk, they meet on Wednesdays at six o'clock and the regular meeting is at seven, first Wednesday of the month. The regular town council meeting, there was a public hearing on the sale of Alexander Parkway that, um, was, that sale was approved. Seven hundred forty-six thousand, seven forty-two dollars was put in the not, replenished the non-lapsing fund for the BOE. The ordinance, amending chapter seven to implement revisions of the FEMA to participate in national flood insurance program that was approved. Quickly, from the town manager's report, the town was successful in issuing or sold seven million dollars in bonds. The rental street project received bids and the box culvert will not be in until December. The ri- library roof, they received bids on there, are looking for bids that should be completed before winter. Soap Street, twenty-five Soap Street for the new constabulary was officially purchased and Mary Galorio is now the president of the county town and city management.
Motion to adjourn? Adjourned.